State they know.
Everybody makes mistakes. App doesn't know what app is. Hello.
Good afternoon.
How are you doing?
You need a new bid for that.
Yeah, the moon.
All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Conference of Tuesday, June twenty fourth, uh, twenty twenty five. One item on the uh, this uh, on the agenda, excuse me, I'll get this right someday. Uh, is discussion regarding a proposed contract with Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition. Mr. Rick.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, um, we're here to talk about a proposed contract with the Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition. Um, a little bit of background, um, in nineteen ninety six, on July one, we actually entered into a contract that established a Norman Economic Development Coalition. Um, and that was for the purpose of promoting recruiting new and existing, existing business and industry for the city of Norman. And that is contract number K ninety six, ninety seven, thirty three. Um, the original contract, um, extended through June thirtieth, nineteen ninety seven, um, but could be extended by mutual agreement for an additional twelve month period. So essentially it rolled over from year to year as long as council made the appropriation for the dues that we paid to Norman Economic Development Coalition. Uh, we did do one amendment, um, in nineteen ninety eight. Um, it updated some of the language with regard to termination, um, and then there was some other language that was modified with regard to the original agreement. And again, same provision about its duration. Um, it was good through June thirtieth, ninety eight, and then it continued from year to year thereafter, um, unless one of the parties terminated it. Um, recently, um, the mayor, the city manager, and the city clerk got information from the NEDC president and CEO Lawrence McKinney about NEDC transitioning from being the Norman Economic Development Coalition to being the Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition. Um, NEDC again was dedicated to improving quality of life of Norman residents through creation and retention of jobs. Um, the Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition essentially expands that responsibility to elevate the eco- the economies of Cleveland County for all citizens. So the Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition includes Lexington, Slaughterville, Noble, Norman, and then South Oklahoma City. As opposed to the regular NEDC, which that contract was between Norman, uh, NEDC, the Chamber, and the University. All right. So what I've done is gone through and looked at the prior NEDC contract um, and how that compares to the contract that's being proposed for the Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition. Um, subsection one talks about the scope of services, and this is the Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition contract. Um, subsection A talks about this entity serving an advisory and consultative role with regard to the city's economic development objectives. Um, this particular language is not in the original NEDC contract, so it is new language, um, for us. Um, the Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition will engage in industrial and business solicitation activities. That language from the new contract is very similar to the language in section one A of the NEDC contract. Subsection C talks about the Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition producing marketing materials to promote city assets. This is new language, however, that's essentially what NEDC does for us now. If you go to their website, um, they have information about the city of Norman. Um, there's some specific information about the different commercial locations that are up for sale or rent, um, that they promote on their current NEDC website, or the party's NEDC website. And Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition will do something similar, um, with regard to the website that they are going to, um, create at www dot selectclevelandcounty dot com. Um, but this, because we're changing sort of that process, this language in this particular contract is actually new language. Subsection D of section one, the Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition will endeavor to stimulate and encourage opportunities for collaboration and partnerships with private sector, other Cleveland County cities and Cleveland County to achieve mutually beneficial outcomes. That language is very similar to section one C of the NEDC contract. CCEDC will make recommendations and reports to the city as that may be necessary. Um, that language is similar to section one E of the NEDC contract. Section two talks about the terms of the agreement, um, and very similar to section three of contracts, the NEDC contract. Um, this agreement is supposed to begin July one, twenty twenty five, and then June thirty, twenty twenty six. Um, and then again, it renewed for an additional twelve months every, every year thereafter. Um, unless either one, somebody terminates it, or number two, um, these agreements, when they go year to year, council still has to make the appropriation, um, for that next fiscal year. If you don't make the appropriation, essentially the contract goes away. Um, and that language is, is the same language that's similar, uh, like I said before, to section three of the NEDC contract. Um, there's some additional consideration sections. One is about indemnification in three A, um, very similar to three A in contract number ninety six, ninety seven, thirty three. Uh, there's a provision regarding termination. Um, unless termination is given by written notice, at least ninety days before the expiration of the annual renewing contract, it will continue in full force and effect for another twelve month period. Um, there, there was an amendment to the NEDC contract. Um, and this language for termination comes from that amendment. So we had the initial contract when it was amended in ninety seven. This language was included with regard to termination, um, putting in the provision with regard to ninety days' notice. Um, and then again, automatically renewing unless, unless one of the parties gets notice with regard to termination. Political activities. Um, this language in this contract says CCEDC will not utilize any funding to engage in political activities for the purpose of supporting or opposing a candidate or political party. This issue is addressed in the original NEDC contract, but it's a little bit different. In the original NEDC contract, there's a definition of political activity, and that is, it includes but not limited to language regarding supporting or opposing a state or local question. So in the original NEDC contract, not only were they prohibited from supporting or opposing a political candidate, they were also prohibited from supporting or opposing a state or local question. Um, and again, they've taken out the state of local question provision, um, in this proposed contract, and that's the difference between the NEDC contract and the CCEDC contract with regard to political activity has to do with the issue about supporting or opposing local questions. The other additional consideration is a board seat. Um, in the NEDC contract, we have one board seat that is occupied by the city manager. Again, this is pretty similar. It's not specifically addressed in the NEDC contract, but there is a whereas clause in that original NEDC contract that provided for, um, a position on the board by the city manager. And this is just sort of further explaining that particular issue, um, in the proposed contract. All right. Funding. This requires the city invest a sum of one dollar per capita based on the latest census projections. And their number as of July first, twenty twenty three is a hundred and thirty thousand, forty six dollars, which is due again thirty days after the, um, agreement is executed. The original contract, so this would be the ninety six contract, required that each of the parties contribute seventy five thousand dollars. So that was from the city, the university, and the chamber. When the contract was amended in ninety seven, it provided for each entity paying a hundred thousand dollars a year. So we upped it, uh, for, we upped that number twenty five thousand dollars per entity. Um, in our current adopted FY twenty six budget, um, there's an appropriation for NEDC of one twenty five. So we're about five thousand dollars short of what this contract would require in terms of the investment from the city. But again, the funding language is pretty similar, um, just the numbers over the years have changed. The thing I did notice, and I'm calling this omissions, are things that were included in the original NEDC contract or the amendment that are not included in this contract. That ninety, nineteen ninety seven amendment had a provision in there about NEDC reporting quarterly the status of its activities to the university and the city and the chamber. There is also supposed to furnish quarterly financial reports, and include revenue and expense reports compared to budget and balance sheets covering the, that period and the year to date. That provision is not in the proposed CCEDC contract. Um, the other issue that is in the NEDC contract that's not in the current proposed contract, um, has to do with providing a copy of their audits. Change ninety six, ninety seven, thirty three does require that, um, the annual audit for NEDC be provided to the city. And again, that particular provision is not something that's in the proposed, um, CCEDC contract. All right.
Uh, on, on that last slide, um, how do I say this? To me, I think both of those are non-starters, for me. If we can't adequately document where our funds are being spent and how they are being leveraged with other communities' funds, I've got, I mean, I've got a lot of heartburn with that, so I'll just, I'll say that about that one. So how, do you have a total of how much we've put into NEDC as a city over the thirties?
It's gonna be, that first year's gonna be seventy five thousand, which was ninety six, and then from there going forward, it's gonna be hard.
Has there been any talk of like, an equitable transition plan? You know, we, the city, the university, and the chamber created this, we stood it up, we maintained it for thirty years. Um, and then, you know, other communities are gonna come alongside, which I, I don't have a problem with that part, but how do, how do we get value for the thirty years that we put into the system versus the newcomers that are coming in? I don't know that I've actually expressed my question adequately, but, um.
That's a concern that we can take action there.
You're on vacation.
Okay.
So in, kind of along that line, one of the things that, uh, was discussed, early on, as, as the AIM process was initiated, is to look at the land use map to determine where additional industrial real property opportunities might exist uh, with about ninety some odd acres in total left in Norman city limits that's developable as an industrial park. Um, when the State Department of Commerce calls and said, who's got three hundred contiguous acres with rail? And we don't have anything like that inside city limits, but we do have some things like that in some of our neighboring agencies in Cleveland County that, uh, probably the closest you could get to is the, the value of their buy-in would be just access to assets that would be on the balance sheet that currently don't exist in Norman city limits. That's, that's probably as close as we get in terms of, yeah, that, that ramp up. They'll probably see more activity. We recognize that if the jobs are created in Cleveland County, we'll definitely see the lion's share of, uh, the demand for housing and the demand for retail activities happening in Norman.
No, I think that's, I mean, that's a fair statement, and I, that's something to hang your hat on. I, I think my heartburn comes from, again, we've, we've paid into this system, and we're, we're, this is gonna sound terrible. We're letting new people come sit at the table without the buy-in. We've put a lot of chips on the table, we've risked a lot of chips over the years, and I think, you know, there should be some deference given to that, whether or not it's, we get a year, or we don't have to pay into the system, or we get five years, or whatever, I don't know what the agreement is. I think my point was, have those conversations even been broached or had? Like, has there been talks of, thanks, Norman, here's next?
Uh, I would ask you another question that you finished.
Yeah, no, yeah, that, that conversation had not taken place.
Where's, when do we have to approve the contract for OML, for ACOG, for many of the other organizations that we belong to as, as a city? The only people that we demand that from is this organization, and it's changing, as he says, to change scope, so, so there is uh, a way of being able to do it. But we don't normally go through these, or any contractor, uh, that we have an agreement with. We don't sit down and reargue the contract and, and do those kinds of things with a concrete contractor or asphalt contractor, name, name the two. And so, that's my, go ahead.
Okay, so emissions, audit plans, can you go back to the other mission, commission? Okay, yeah, I'm in an agreement with Councilor Peacock, I am not okay with those being left out. I would also ask, when they're not supposed to be involved in local questions, are we talking on the ballot, or also what a council might decide on?
That is a very astute observation, and what I was doing was really looking for the definition of what a local question is. Is a local question something that just comes before council, or is a local question something that actually goes to other people? That really wasn't defined in the original NEDC contract. I think if we were gonna, thinking about that issue, I think we would want to define that a little bit more clearly, as to what it actually means.
I would agree if we're going to be even a part of this. Okay, if you go back to where the city manager is appointed to the board, is there any particular reason why it has to be the city manager and why it would be the small business person?
No.
Cause actually, that role is in the city manager's office.
Right.
And thinking about public perception, because a lot of us were contacted late last year regarding, um, the apparent, what looked to be like the city manager in league with these entities to bring a very unpopular turnpike or arena to the table, like, it doesn't, if you could remove that out of the situation and have somebody whose job actually is to bring business, I like that structure more, sorry.
Or does it mean?
Yes, um, so that, that was my thought on that, uh, just knowing from last year, what kind of, uh, optics that had. So, and then the five K part, I'm sorry, I feel like we gave them more than we should have this year, uh, because they had not been turning in their audits. And so, questions of political, uh, activities aside, I would expect that if you want us to like buy in even more, that you would be holding up your end of the bargain. Um, so those are my thoughts on that.
Are we, the funds for this, if we were to pay this, come out of?
General fund.
Okay, it's all out of the general funds. So when we were presented this, we were presented other agencies that apply for funds through social and voluntary services, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it does, but those, are those the same funds?
I'm trying to think.
Social and voluntary services is also general.
It's general fund, so they're fungible, uh, and all your discretionary dollars. In terms of, is it the same kind of service you receive from the other agencies in the social voluntary services fund? It's, that's not quite apples and apples.
But they have to submit an audit to other agencies?
I don't think so. Social and voluntary services agencies, um, contract counsel for a scope of services and does reports to council, but I don't think they're required to do audits.
But they at least report?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I don't remember, I don't remember having a report from NEDC. I remember getting a letter, uh, telling us that they would never give us an audit.
In the back of this document, on page ninety three, there's, they addressed the financials and audits, and why they're related. I don't know if you've got to see that yet.
If we do, um, just Mayor Heikle's point on if we have a rogue crew or something that we're hiring, do we get a statement of condition from those entities before we do business with them? Like a SOC statement of condition to see what their status is?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, usually there is some provision in there with regard to not discrimination and things along those lines in the actual contract, but I don't know.
We rely on their bonding and, and to submit for bonding, they're gonna have to, bonding agency.
Um, Anthony, all of the social, voluntary and social services agencies are five oh one C threes?
I don't know if that's a requirement, but I suspect that the majority of them are.
I know this one's.
It's required to be a five oh one C three. We do not require an audit. We're talking about an award of ten thousand dollars. They have to have a certified financial statement.
Um, and I know, uh, CCEDC, NEDC is not a five oh one C three, they're a five oh one C six, different creature from whatever that IRS detail means, so not, I mean, close, but not quite the same apple.
And then my last question, if the ninety day term, and this is due on July, if we were to decide to not?
I think this is not gonna be on by July one, so the, the actual effective date will have to be amended to whatever, whatever council considers it, and assuming they approve it, it can be modified to that date.
Thank you.
Councilmember. We're teaming.
So I have, I share the same heartburn in reservations as Councilmember Peacock and Councilmember Grant on not providing financials or audits, you know, given the history, as far as, I'm still under the impression we still have outstanding audits that we've not been provided when we have given our end of the, you know, the financial piece. Um, I know how expensive audits can be, so I can understand not providing an audit. But at the very least, I would expect, um, compiled financial statements prepared by a public accounting firm. Not internal, not internally prepared financial statements. So, a com, you know, you have got audit, and then compilation is the next down below.
They did provide to us, um, copies of those audits, and they were done by a firm that you're well acquainted.
Public accounting firm.
Yeah.
An independent public accounting firm.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, the, when was the last time we received revenue and expense reports?
So they are presented, uh, at board meetings on a monthly basis.
And by you being there and a designee of OU and the chamber, they fulfill the stipulation in that original agreement about providing expense and revenue reports?
Yes, that is their understanding.
At that meeting, which we are in attendance at.
Right, they're just not publicly distributed.
But it's not something that they have to present to the city council?
Correct, and had not been in years past, is my understanding.
Okay, and in this new agreement, OU and the chamber are no longer partners in this, is that the way I understand it?
Uh, it is my understanding, um, more Norman Technology Center is and has been for a number of years. City of Moore, yeah, City of Norman, uh, and OU, as far as I know, was still.
So as the new county coalition, we've got the new member cities, Slaughterville, Noble, and Purcell, or not Purcell, but Lexington, Moore, and South OKC, but it also still includes OU, the Chamber of Commerce?
Um, yeah, they, and, and, more Norman Technology Center, yes.
And then, um, the county is, as a county coalition, is the county as an entity paying a, an amount equal to the population of the county? Or, uh, an amount equal to the population of the unincorporated? However you might determine that.
I will confirm.
Um, just, you know, wondering if everybody's paying a percent of the population they're responsible for. If it's a county coalition, is the county a member of it? And if so, are they contributing some per capita?
And we do know, uh, that the city of Moore, um, is a participant. I'm not convinced Noble and Lexington are there yet in terms of the, uh, city hierarchy of needs to be able to participate. But I, I think they'll recognize the value they hold in real property opportunities in what, what can come from it, from that investment.
And Slaughterville is actually bigger than Lexington in population, so it's.
Is it really?
Yeah. Lexington is a tiny, tiny town. Uh, but, uh, yeah, I was wondering about, um, yeah, if the county's involved, are they paying that same per capita rate? And then, along the same lines of Councilor Peacock's questions about, uh, contributing funding for projects or things, so the incubator, uh, so the county gave a million dollars, and the city of Norman gave a million dollars. I don't know, I don't view it as some sort of proprietary thing, like, oh, the Moore can't use it because we paid for it. But what is that, so we and the county help pay for it, and then the whole county gets to benefit from it? Which I don't, is not a bad thing, but we did pony up a million dollars for it.
Um, yeah, they're probably eighteen months away from, uh, having the space rehabilitated and available. Um, and my guess is, it would probably go on a first come, first served basis with those, uh, business entities that have the viability to benefit from that incubator process uh, and to be grown into self-sustaining and stand-up, uh, businesses. So hopefully you're, it's, it'll be measured in throughput. Um, and we, and we would expect to see that entrepreneurial mindset. Maybe it got developed, uh, in another part of Cleveland County, but we're able to grow it here in Norman, graduated here in Norman.
That would be kind of the thing, would be, is a startup in Norman going to get preferential treatment? Or will they get picked for that limited space over a startup in Moore? Because Norman, we put the money in to do it, expecting that Norman entrepreneurs and businesses would be able to benefit from it. Would there be, I guess the concern would be, would there be less of an opportunity for Norman-based entrepreneurs and businesses to have space in that incubator because we've now opened it up to the whole factoring in the county did put in money too, but, so that could cover more.
Right.
Perhaps, but the city of Moore did not put any money into this. So if a entrepreneur, business from Moore, got picked for the last spot in the incubator over a business from Norman, it just would, yeah, you know, wouldn't we put a million dollars into it of our money? So just, uh.
It would not land well.
Those are some of the questions I think that kind of falls under. And then, entities being subject to the internal auditor for the city of Norman. So, um, food and shelter friends, I think the auditor, the audit of that wasn't an audit of their entire, you know, organization, but the funding the city gave, right?
Rains the house.
The contract that we had with them to provide a service to us. So I would assume, unless we change, or unless it's different, at the council's direction as a whole, we, any, the way I understand it, any entity that receives any money from the city of Norman could be subject to a audit of those specific funds by the city of Norman's auditors, including OML, right? If we said, we're giving you this much money for our membership, and we wanna know about it, can our auditor take a look at where our funding is going? Maybe they say, no, I don't know how that works.
So, yeah, compliance, uh, to audit, compliance against the contract with which we'd enter, we would say absolutely on the table and part of the, part of the relationship.
So I would, I would think they would still be subject to that potentially.
And just, yeah, what, we, we wouldn't audit their financial statements, but we would audit their adherence to this contract.
Yes, so, okay, thanks.
Councilmember Dixon.
So, but their main job is not to bring in sales taxes, right?
Correct.
They're to bring in good jobs, better jobs than we have, like, and they gave, what, top of the world? Most of their balance sheet consists of land that they own, and they can use as incentives to get people to manufacture hats in Norman, or to have like an inbound call center. Um, you know, stop the people calling you, trying to sell you warranties. Um, if you have an issue with Bank of America, somebody stole your credit card, you call. More than likely, you're talking to somebody in Norman, Oklahoma. And that was land that NEDC owned and used to get them to come in?
Uh, former Seitel building, I think they facilitated the, uh, visits typically when a lead comes in for somebody looking to, uh, relocate a business or expand the business in the. somebody looking to, uh, relocate a business or expand the business in the new markets. Their first phone call goes to the State Department of Commerce. The State Department of Commerce's preference is to notify regional bodies of economic development, those coalitions, because there are a lot fewer of them statewide than there are cities and/or counties. And they'll send out a request for information, do you have property that meets this criteria? And a handful of cities will have property that meets that criteria, and they'll go back and submit it to State Department of Commerce, and hopefully that results in a phone call and a site visit with Department of Commerce bodies, the business entity typically with no names. You'll get a, you're going to get a visit from a company called Yellow Shoe, and we have no idea who they are, and they won't tell you their last name, so you can't Google search them and find out who they are. Um, and, and that's, that's typically, um, the function of economic development coalitions. It's to, uh, secure and maintain, and the definition is quality jobs, which 1750-an-hour-plus benefits was the last posted dollar value of those quality jobs from the State Department of Commerce. Internally, what we do is focus on that retail, uh, attraction and retention, and that's primarily what Sarah Kaplan's job does. So they do, they do bump into each other, uh, on occasion, but, yeah, it's not a replication of services in that respect.
And then if, so I know, I know they were involved, I don't, you know, to what extent, with the, the call center, Top of the World, and ME. If they're, if they're not advocating for Norman to be a place to be and using land they own as some help or whatever, is there another entity that would do that for us, or that we could contract to do that for us, or could we do it in-house?
Um, the, the real property on that balance sheet would be the hardest thing to replace with acreage in University Industrial Park around ME, and a chunk of real property in the Saxon Industrial Park. Those are assets that the city doesn't keep on our books, so we wouldn't be able to make, uh, deals happen in terms of, um, lease agreements or real property sales that provide an incentive to make sure they chose us over some other part of the state. And I'm not aware of another entity that would own real property that would fit that gap.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
Yeah, so, NEDC at pretty definite value, there's, uh, www-selectnorman.com. As it illustrates, we're transitioning from that to select Cleveland County, and being asked to pay, uh, 30% more. Is that increased cost going to have increased value to it now that we're also going to be pulled in with the rest of Cleveland County? Now we're no longer, our name's not on the title, we're not getting the, uh, it's like, we don't get the, the sponsorship of having our name on the stadium anymore, uh, but we're just paying more. And whereas it is a good question to ask, if, uh, the other communities are also being asked to pay a dollar per capita, and then if the county has, uh, got some corresponsibility too. But, uh, that whole price point there with the decreased service, the decrease focused on Norman, is, uh, kind of a hangup. For me, because it's, it's genuinely asking us to pay more for less.
I think the cost increase to go from the 125,000 to the per capita 130, so we're not quite a 30% increase, but a 5% increase. The City of Moore, uh, is participating on a per capita rate at 63,000 and change. And what we recognized in one of the big efforts, uh, recently, um, was the creation of the Oklahoma Aviation Academy, that the value, uh, by, uh, decision-makers in the state's process to go in there and compete for those dollars was, if it's just going to benefit Norman, we're probably not interested in supporting the Norman High School Aviation Academy, but we would be interested in supporting the Oklahoma Aviation Academy that could be available to students from a much greater circle than just Norman public schools. And that's when that focus began to shift to a more regional approach, because people who are handing out big dollars at the state and at the federal government, it was an easier sell, and there were multiple benefactors in the distribution of those dollars.
Thought we were at a hundred thousand, just budgeted for 125.
Oh, we, we've been doing 125 for-
Okay.
Long time ago, yeah.
All right, and, all right, so, so like, the, the expanded coverage, I, I, uh, I can understand the costs are probably going to go up to them. And it's nice to help, like, win that. But, still, even if it's just 5,000 more, they're still asking us to pay more for, uh, less focused services, it'd make more sense for like, the, uh, the Aviation Academy from to stay as NEDC, and then partner with, say, Cleveland County for that, uh, broadened focus, rather than creating an entire new entity that replaces the entity that was dedicated to bringing businesses into Norman, and now dedicated to, um, bringing businesses into the entirety of Cleveland County. What is the opportunity for them in the expansion to Cleveland County?
Um, access to, uh, future industrial property that is rail-served?
It's buying property.
Yeah, there, and, and those properties that lend themselves well, uh, in the competition for requests for what space you got when the State Department of Commerce says we've got a, a business opportunity for, you know, battery manufacturing, or semiconductors, or whatever the new next, uh, technology is. Um, and we're selling out of a near-empty basket and not able to respond to the lion's share of those requests. So, the ability to expand and, uh, gain access for job creation in Cleveland County to real property outside Norman city limits, but still in our job market.
Yeah, and their, their portfolio is fundamentally limited if, uh, they're constrained to Norman city limits, and that portfolio of land holdings is the bulk of their value, right? So I don't know, I, I could see value in Cleveland, it'd be nice if, if, uh, we can negotiate that they also keep that focus on Norman on the side, so like, selectnorman.com doesn't go away. And, yeah, so they still have a, uh, you know, a DBA that's also advocating for Norman while they broaden their, their horizons, but I, I don't want to lose what we have with NEDC, and that's, you know, they're, uh, this offer is to get rid of what we have with NEDC, and instead, accept a pool with all of Cleveland County. And just, it doesn't seem like, uh, we're getting the right value back for it.
The, uh, the, the value, and I think there's, there, the description of the investment made in the, uh, intellectual properties of NEDC, the website value, the name recognition, because it's been in circulation for 30 years, and how do we make sure that is not lost? But, I, I do see opportunities for us to market it, and it be connected to the balance sheet and the opportunities of, in the Norman part of that portfolio. And then if we can't satisfy the need, have that jump up to the Cleveland County portfolio. But I agree, we don't want to lose, uh, what goodwill may have been developed over, uh, a number of years from, um, just having NEDC out there in circulation.
Yes, having the ability to, to audit, or at least be able to see that we are getting the attention that we're paying for, I think is critical to making any kind of contract like this work.
One of the things that, uh, is in conversation, the value of the real property holdings, uh, along the airport fence line. Early on, uh, they identified industrial opportunities for kind of that tech industry, the MEs of the world. And, uh, the challenge in marketing, uh, that piece of real property definitely changed when, uh, high-density housing went in next door, and some of the, uh, agencies that were in search of that kind of property, uh, they said, well, you know, we have deliveries that show up at 10 o'clock at night, and we don't want our parking lot lights being in the window of multifamily housing. But what that means on the other side is the value of that real estate all of a sudden went up, uh, and it may provide opportunities to do some land swaps. The value from the Economic Development Coalition's perspective is the fence line of the airport, and the opportunity to do, uh, industrial development, uh, aviation-specific through the fence. So, um, that'll be a, a big push, but, yeah, now they're talking the value of that balance sheet, cost of the real estate versus the market value of the real estate, it's gone up quite a bit, and could provide some brand-new opportunities we hadn't, uh, recognized when we're in search of ME versus in search of aviation-related, uh, industry that would be through the fence. So, a little less concern about light spilling into the residential properties next door. There's a, a lot in play in the, the, I think the draw to Oklahoma is definitely changing, and a huge emphasis in aerospace and weather and radar and all that's definitely-
Basketball.
Added value.
Councilmember Dixon?
Oh, what do you don't say?
Uh, no.
Thank you, uh, yeah, actually, I was just kind of going to touch on Councilmember Nash's last comment, and then something, Councilmember Holman said. So, we'll say 100% represents all the contributions from all the cities in this new Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition. And then we're going to say Norman represents 30% of that, Moore's 15%, Slaughterville's 5%, whatever. Does that mean that Norman gets 30% of the resources, or 30% of the time spent on us? Or is it a equal opportunity, everybody gets equal time, equal treatment, regardless of how much money you put into the system?
Typically, the response is driven by that call, uh, from the, uh, Department of Commerce, and what they're, what they're in search of. And we either don't respond as NEDC if we don't have a piece of property that matches it, or we do respond if it exists in Cleveland County outside Norman city limits. If we have it and it exists outside, they would probably submit both. When the film industry saw a change in real property up in Oklahoma City, uh, I think there were five properties that fit that, uh, request. And we submitted all, just to make sure we're casting the widest net. And, um, it, it's, it's very common that the goal is to get the Department of Commerce to focus eyes here, and then the best piece of property usually wins at the end of the day, what fits their need best. And if it's in Norman city limits, we'll get it. And if our piece of property just doesn't check all the boxes, we couldn't pay enough or incentivize enough to make it happen here.
Yeah, I think that's where I, I mean, I definitely understand Councilmember Nash's logic of paying more to get less service, even perceived less service, um, you know. Again, we've, we've paid into the system for 30 years, um, and to lose a seat at the table, um, that may not be the right way to put it. I'm just, I'm, I'm having a hard time reconciling this piece of it, and I don't really know how to even express what I'm after and what is giving me heartburn, other than it just doesn't pass the smell test.
So, I, it just, it just occurred to me in this conversation that what those contributions have resulted in is the balance sheet that is currently maintained, that has about 90 plus or minus acres in Norman city limits. There is zero acreage in Moore and zero acreage in Noble. In order for those entities to actually go in there and start hustling, real property acquisition is going to have to start happening, and they're going to have to participate. And they've never participated before. Um, and we recognize there are people who live in Moore that drive into Norman to work.
Sure.
Hopefully they'll, you know, by the grace of here before they head back. But, um, I, I think that may be, that factor is, the balance sheet is 100% in Norman city limits at this time.
Well, and I'm definitely on after, you know, this idea of winner-take-all, like, that Norman should rule the roost, and we call the shots. It's not really what I'm after, but I, I just want to make sure that we're being good stewards of not only tax dollars from today, but over the past 30 years, and that we're doing, we're making the right decisions. Um, and I think a lot of my viewpoint on this comes from the incubator. I'm glad that Councilman Holman brought that up, because, you know, originally, that was, it was a million dollars of City of Norman, ARPA dollars. Uh, the original idea was that it was going to be an open competition to City of Norman residents, that we were going to fund the best ideas that you brought us, up to the tune of a million dollars. Um, you didn't have to be a startup, you didn't have to be anybody, it was literally the best ideas. And it was a small business development, it was a COVID relief kind of thing, it was, it was a lot of things. And, um, that transitioned into an incubator, which I understand has more sustainable, sustainability to it. But now we're talking, you know, that City of Moore might get a seat at the incubator, Slaughterville might get in the incubator. And this whole, again, this whole idea was to lift up Norman residents, Norman businesses. I don't have anything against more businesses or these other places, but that was just not the intent, and I feel like we're going down kind of the same path.
Um, and, and in that respect, I think the answer clearly could be, Moore needs an incubator. And that makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah. I think those are all, I think that's a great point. And, uh, hopefully this contract is a negotiation still, and these things can be brought up to them as very much sticking points, uh, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure we're going to be able to approve it as, as is currently.
Well, one thing too, that I see in that, not to jump ahead, just to get the thought off my head. Uh, a lot of businesses come to Norman because they want to be in Norman. If, if I were an architect, I would want to be in the largest populated city I could because of exposure. I wouldn't want to be in a lot of parks, slaughters, or something. And so, a lot of the things that, um, it seems to me that what we're talking about are those parcels. I have problems with, with the idea of giving businesses property from the city as an incentive in, in doing things. I just don't, I don't like the idea of incentivizing businesses. He can do that, and he can lure the man in helicopters, whatever, aerospace, whatever they want to, to put it. But I think it'll even out, I don't think it'll be as stratified as, as what we're thinking. This is just a gist, too.
Yeah.
Uh, and that people will want to be somewhere, and there, there are good businesses in Noble.
Sure, yeah.
And, and, and that's what they choose, because they want a spot like that, and probably cost, uh, and things like that. So it's, it's, I don't, I don't think it's so strictly stratified, but anyway, Councilmember.
Uh, just to add to that, I think that's why I would prefer, again, this equitable transition plan. Do we give the City of Norman a year to breathe while the other cities catch up and get integrated? Do we give two years? Do we give five years? Do we give it no time? I don't know what the que, the right answer to that question is, I just want to know if those conversations are being had.
Just for clarification, NEDC is a 501(c)(6).
Yeah.
So, that is for Business Leagues, Chartered Commerce League, Board of World Trade, and Professional Football Leagues, which are not organized for profit, so they are a 501(c) corporation, so they're a nonprofit.
Uh, that designation, so that's the political things, correct? Your six?
Catherine did bring up the issue of, her recollection is that local question issue was put in there for the purpose of prohibiting it from being advocates, not for just providing information. So, obviously, you know, it depends on who's paying attention to it, whether they think that line has been crossed or not. But, it's kind of sort of similar to us, the city is not allowed to advocate for a position, or, you know, we can't present information, we can provide information to public, regardless of what it was.
So, in negotiations, again, uh, audit language needs to be there, activities report needs to be there, maybe change it to city manager or designee from the city manager's office. I would say, on the political side, I know it wasn't defined, I think we would benefit from a definition, especially where we're at as a city, there are some unresolved things that are still out there. Um, so, yeah, I would like to define what political activities mean, and have an agreement where both, well, I guess all parties are, um, behaving in accordance with the contract. Because I guess my worry about becoming the, or being a part of this new thing is will we see shenanigans from other cities that want to see a council in another city vote a certain way? So, those are just my thoughts about potential negotiations.
Councilmember Nash, did you have a question?
Paying for council seats in Wana?
Councilmember Nash, did you have a question?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Dixon?
We're just going to say with the, the dollar amount that they're asking from us, from Moore, from Slaughterville, from whatever, I think we should ask for more seats on the executive board. I mean, I think that would be a, it was more representation on their executive board, not just the board, but the executive board.
I did confirm Cleveland County is a paying member, I just asked Commissioner Cleveland to reckon, now give me the formula for that calculation, that they are paying members.
All right. We've got 10 minutes, is there anything else? Is there anything else in this discussion that anybody wants to add?